Okay, good evening. Welcome to the November 8th Special Town Council Meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is visitors' comments. We have no visitors this evening. There is no old business that I'm aware of unless anyone has any old business. Okay, new business. We have a couple of agenda items. The first is we are going to interview Edward Collins Center regarding the town manager's search. And we have with us tonight Mary Icardi, who is going to speak. If you want to come up to the...
Is this me?
Yeah. So I think, Mary, if you could just kind of, you know, give a little background about the Collins Center and how you conduct a search and whatever other information you want to give us about the search, that would be helpful, and then we can ask questions.
All right, great. I'll give you a brief overview. It's nice to be here. You may or may not know. I've done some work with the town, done some HR work here, which is great. I'm familiar with you a little bit. So my name's Mary Icardi. I lead the HR practice for the Collins Center for Public Management. We are a center within the McCormick School of Government at UMass Boston. I've been with the center 14 years. I cannot believe it. I quit my job as the HR Director for the Town of Watertown in 2004 when I was pregnant with my third child, and we just dropped him off to Quinnipiac as a freshman. So I was home with the kids and, you know, joined the Collins Center 14 years ago. I was in Watertown for nine years. I was in Barnstable before that as the Assistant Personnel Director. Before that, I was in Wellesley, and before that, I was with the Mass DPW. So if you do the math, that hasn't been the Mass DPW since Governor Wald got elected. So, yeah, it's been a while. It became Mass Highway and then Mass DOT. So backing into everything's... I'll be 60 next July. You know, you can't ask that, but I'll offer that up as an HR Director. So with the Collins Center, we've done over 100 executive recruitments for town managers, town administrators. I wasn't sure about giving your proposal, so I did send one along that if you want to review later, and it lists all the projects we've done. We just recently filled the City Manager of Chelsea. That was a fun one to do. You'd be shocked to know there's some politics in some of these jobs and filling these jobs and what people feel, you know, a council should do with these jobs. So that was a really good one. You know, we're very familiar with this former government. We have done, you know, Longmeadow East, Longmeadow, Ludlow. We did the Town of Framingham, NADIC. So we've done many, many of these searches, and they're technically the same process, which I'll walk you through, but each one is unique. And our process starts with meeting with you. You're the appointing authority. It's one of the... Your biggest roles is to fill this position.
Exactly.
And we, you know, it's too dangerous to get it wrong, you know, and no process is ever perfect. But if we put the work in upfront, you'll set yourself up for success. And the first thing that we do is we want to get to know the town. We want to get to know the job. We want to get to know the climate, the culture, and the dynamics. Because the worst thing you can do is, you know, say, "Come work for us in sunshine and lollipops." And, you know, then people get here and say, "Well, that's not what you said." So you'll find if you look at some of our profiles, which I'm happy to share, that we're very honest. We start out by asking each one of you. We like to meet with each person individually. So, and then we synthesize the data to create what we call the profile, which is, you know, the marketing tool that we use. So we like to interview each of you individually. We will ask you who else you think we should meet with. Sometimes it's a finance person. Sometimes municipalities want to have an opportunity for the public to send in an email, you know, "What are your thoughts? What are you looking for?" We only ever ask three questions. And the questions are, "What are the challenges facing the town?" "What are the challenges facing the next person who sits in this job?" And, "What do you believe are the ideal characteristics for the person to fill the job at this time?" And over time, what the ideal characteristics can change. You know, when it's a seasoned staff, you want one thing. If you have strong finance, you want another. So we don't really decide for you. We let you tell us. So we synthesize all of that information. We want to make sure we have the finances in there. Some municipalities want to have a public forum and have it be a listening session for you all. That's really up to you. We did that. Chelsea is a very large city. Twenty-five people came. We did it when we did Rutland. Eight people came. You know, we're finding these days, having the email, and we have actually done that in different languages. You know, if there's another language that is predominant in the town, you can provide that that way. So we could facilitate those. Only a few... Only a small percentage does the broad listening, because it's really... You've been elected to do this job. So we find that there may be some people you want us to speak with sometimes, you know, to get a business perspective or a planning perspective. That's really, really up to you. In most cases, we work with... Well, let me step back. We create the profile, and then you vote on it. We need it to be the full committee voting. We don't like it to be a chair or a council president or a select board chair, just because we really want it to be everybody's joint understanding of what you're looking for. Sometimes there's disagreement on what we need. So we like the committee or the council to vote on what the profile looks like. Now, if there's disagreement and we can't vote on a profile, we'd like to hold a workshop session with you so that you can work it out and come up with what is it we're looking for. But we usually do a very good job. That is, in the 100 that I've done, I think it's 102, three times we had to do a little bit more work on getting people on the same page. Those were larger organizations, you know. A city council of 11, you know, so the larger the number, the harder it can be to wordsmith something. But we stick with you through that. And that becomes our marketing tool. So we advertise. People say, "Oh, do you put it in the ICMA, which is the National Association?" We say yes, because sometimes people look at that and say, "Oh, I'm moving back to Massachusetts. I, you know, I went to UMass, and I want to go back there." You know, so that's worthwhile. We do an incredible amount of direct recruiting. Some call it poaching. I call it recruitment. And, you know, and a lot of personal networks. The Collins Center has worked... We just did our map the other day. I should send it to you. Out of 351 municipalities, we have worked with 268 of them. And I personally have worked with over 100 of them. So that's what you get for being there 14 years. And every client is a network, you know. So you're probably sick of my postings for treasure collectors and all finance positions, which are so difficult to fill these days. So we do a lot of direct networking. One thing about the Internet, notwithstanding Facebook, is we do not advertise on Facebook. All of the professional agencies have listservs, and that's really a way to directly target people. This is an attractive job. It's a strong form of government. It's an attractive form of government for candidates, people who are in different jobs, either town administrator, assistant town administrator. So this really is an attractive job. So you're not going to have any trouble getting people interested in this. So we use that to market. Now, I've not had any conversation with you. We typically work with a screening committee. I don't know whether that is your plan. We find them helpful. On occasion, we will do a search with Collins Center, initial screening. That's not our preference, but we'll do whatever the client wants. If you're using a screening committee, we suggest you're a large enough group. We don't like when there's one of the appointing authority members on a screening committee, because the screening committee defers to them. And it's very... You're not getting the full flavor of having a screening committee. We have worked with having the elected officials having a representative on the screening committee, but then that's one person hearing things differently and relaying information. It's totally up to you. We make whatever that you want work. We like a screening committee to be five people. Sometimes people can't decide enough, so they make it seven. An odd number is good, only in case you actually have to have a physical vote. In all of our work, only one, only one time did the screening committee want to take a vote, because somebody felt very strongly about one of the candidates, and others didn't want that candidate, which is very rare. We use a consensus method. We use... We don't use... You know, some of my brothers and sisters who do this work use a point factor matrix, you know. Oh, they've got a master's degree. They get this point. They get a this. They get that point. We use yes, no, maybe when we work with a committee to review resumes. And the question they're answering is, "Do you want to meet this person?"
Right.
Because when we do the paper review, we... "Do you want to meet this person?" Yes, no, maybe. And we always like to, the fishing metaphor, cast that net as wide as possible at that screening level, because people look different in person than they do on paper. And we really like to... We'd rather spend the time at that level to interview more. We're not screening out. We're trying to screen in. And these days, and in this market, you definitely want to do that. So, you know, so we will work with the screening committee to come up with questions based on the profile you approve. While it's great to have people on a screening committee, they are screening. They are not searching. We're searching. You know, we're helping you search. So they don't... And they don't give you candidates in their order. They're going to give you equal candidates. And we really focus a great deal on the confidentiality of the executive session meetings, of the candidates' names. People put themselves out there, you know. So we spend a lot of work with the screening committee, saying, "Please don't look at Facebook." And we would like you all to, you know, if we're fortunate enough to be selected, we would like you to actually vote a charge to the screening committee, you know, confidentiality, you know. Just a few use the profile to come up with what... How they should be looking at things. Not imposing your judgment on them, but really, what is the expectation? Because confidentiality is key. And one of the reasons you're smart to, you know, use a consultant is you get to deal with the issues of bias. We're there to make sure there's no bias. We're there to help with the outreach to diversify. And diversification does not just mean race. It means what experiences people have. Who do we... That's why we say we want to cast that net wide. These days, it's certainly about competencies, you know. We don't recommend you require a master's degree. I don't know if your job description requires it. We could certainly say preferred. I like that model the best, because it sends an indication that we want somebody who's a professional public administrator. But you really could be cutting out somebody excellent if you have that as an absolute requirement.
Sure.
So what we do with the screening committee is we meet with them. We, before the deadline, we actually like to develop the questions, because we want the questions to be based on the profile, not on who's applied, because then it's like, "Oh, that one's strong in planning. I'm going to ask a planning question." Or, "That one's weak in HR. I'm going to ask an HR question." Based on your profile, we help them develop the questions. We do not get a vote. We do not recommend candidates. We facilitate their work. And that's our... I mean, we're professionals and technical advisors, but we're not... We don't get a vote. If we know a candidate, we will divulge that. And we know most candidates, and we'll know their history, you know, so we don't keep that a secret. We want to inform people of, you know, there's a lot of municipal geography, and we know most of it. And so we do that. Then we do the preliminary interviews with them, and we go back to the yes, no, maybe. Or sometimes it depends on the pool. Do we say yes, no? And the question at that time is, "Should the council meet this person?" You know, "Should they be moved forward to the next round?" Now, the next round is not officially a finalist until we do the background. So we don't want to name anybody to you that would fail the background. So we use a vendor to do a federal and state query check. We verify their education. I can't tell you how many people fib on resumes. And...
Really?
Yeah. And, you know, we do a credit check. Yeah. The federal and state, we do a credit check. And then we do references. We get a signed release so that we can talk not just to the people they give us, but people, you know, it says, "Anyone we want."
Correct.
And that's where our network comes in, because we know where people have worked. I love it when people skip a job, you know, and don't mention it, you know. But we, you know, that doesn't happen that often. But we do know plenty of people, and we do check, you know, thoroughly the references. So then typically, the screening committee would vote the names of however many, you know. Usually it's three, four, or five, we hope, you know. And that's pending the backgrounds. So then those names would be presented to you by the screening committee, and we would help you facilitate your final process. We can help connect people, but it's your job to negotiate a contract.
Sure.
You know, we don't... Some of our brothers and sisters who do this work will facilitate a contract. We really feel that's the first relationship you have with this person. Now, if you have a lawyer you want help with, most professional managers, you know, have a contract that they think is the most attractive, and they'll start from there. You know, we have all of those too, and we can help you with some of that. But the actual negotiating, we really prefer not to do. But we will set you up for success for that interview process. That's our process. So I'll stop there and answer any questions.
I start?
Go ahead.
Have you represented us before in any town managers that we got?
Have...
Your firm?
Have we represented the town in a town manager's search before? No.
Okay. It's public knowledge that Ryan is applying somewhere else. I can't remember the town. So I think it's okay to talk about it. Do you represent that town or work with that town?
I have...
Winchendon, Mass.
Winchendon.
We're not doing Winchendon.
Okay. And how do you feel about assistants of town managers as candidates?
Excellent.
Someone that's hungry and wants to move up.
You know, you bring up an excellent point. I've seen some assistants who are, you know, not good candidates. I've seen others that are great candidates. I've seen department heads that are great candidates. So I think we, like I said, cast that net, you know, and see where it lands, you know. I don't rule anybody out, you know. I give the example. I have a colleague, a professional colleague, who was an intern in another town over from me. And he's now like the chief HR, you know, director for a huge state agency. And you wouldn't have thought that at the time.
Right.
You know, so he has the talents, the skills, the charisma, the leadership, you know, meteoric ride. And I remember saying, "They hired that intern for that job, and man, he's proved me wrong over and over again." So I don't, I don't think so. I think the more important part is making sure... Certainly, some assistants in a more dynamic municipality have better skills for you than a town administrator from a very small place who doesn't have the issues you deal with.
Right.
So you wouldn't want to necessarily say yes or no. Now, if they've been, you know, it all depends on their skill set and what they were doing before they got there. So I think saying... Usually, we word the profiles, saying, "Experience with similar complexity and an environment similar." You're not... There aren't too many town managers out there that will apply for this. They're either going to be assistant town managers. They're going to be town administrators, or assistant town administrators, or department heads. You'll have to decide if you want to include non-municipal candidates, you know. And sometimes municipal means having been on a FinCom for 83 years.
Sure.
You know, they stay a long time, a lot of people on FinComs. And, you know, so they might be the right candidate. More and more, we've seen public works directors being in the mix for these jobs, depending on the complexity of their department. Planners is another area, you know, that typically has the technical skills. So, you know, I don't think there's rules. I think we're going to ask you what you think about, you know, would you take a corporate CEO? You know, would you take somebody who reported to an executive board? Board relationships are important. Somebody who has no idea about boards, you know, would have a steeper learning curve, you know. But there's boards, and then there's boards.
Right.
You know, so... But great question.
Thank you.
Nothing yet.
I think you've answered a lot of the questions that I had. So I don't have anything right now.
Certainly. No, thank you for coming.
Sure.
You said meteoric rise. I remember Jessica here, interned, and she's been a town administrator and beyond now, so...
So that's why I know her name so well.
Okay, so, sorry.
You say, "I don't know."
Okay, sorry.
It's a small world.
It's a small world after all.
To support our own. So, great success, and yeah, we're proud.
Absolutely. You know, and sometimes you find that diamond.
But to your point, though, you never know. And then, you know, it's just... Their efforts get them to where they need to be, and it's a proven track record. And a lot of times, for me personally, their personal experience far exceeds an MBA or anything like that, depending on, again, the situational needs of the town or the municipality.
So true. I mean, as an HR Director, I have to say, one of my biases was, you know, anybody who's been a food server. I waitressed for eight years at Ground Round, paying for college and graduate school.
Wow, there's a throwback.
There you go. Yeah. See, I told you I'd date myself. Yeah. You know, so again, it's... What does it bring you, you know?
Exactly.
You don't make money as a food server if you don't have good people skills.
True.
And that's our whole business.
You need a job during the weekend?
He owns a diner in town.
Can I get free food, you know?
I let everyone eat.
It's all negotiable.
I'll just shoot over from Shrewsbury, you know. Actually, Shrewsbury's not a bad ride here. It's beautiful. You know, it's a great ride.
Again, thank you for coming, though. Appreciate your time.
My pleasure.
I do have a couple of questions. So would you be the one doing the search?
I would be leading it, yes. So we have... The other two people who might be on it with me are my colleague, Michael Hale, who is recently retired. My dream job, I chose the wrong field, was the general manager of Selco, which is our light district. So at age 55, Group 4, he was able to retire. But we benefited, because he's now an associate with us. So he's got 30 years in municipal management. He was the assistant town manager. And, you know, has been... And then the electric light. So he went from, you know, being the assistant town manager to the electric light manager. And then Becca Meekins, who's one of our new project managers, and she was recently... She just joined us two months ago. She was the assistant town administrator and HR director in Northboro, and the assistant town administrator and HR director for the Town of Grafton. So we don't... We have wonderful management analysts. We do not use them. Sometimes they help format the, you know, the profile, because I'm not that good at that graphic stuff. But, you know, they help us there. But it would be the three of us who would be, and mostly me, because I love this work.
Okay. And then, so like, in the last year, how many executive searches has the Collins Center done? Because I know, like, the list of towns and everything, that's beyond just executive searches. That's like all the other stuff you offer too.
Right, right.
So how many?
So right now, we're doing Holbrook and Mendon, which are not competitors for you, so that's good. We really don't like to be doing two next to each other. You're testing me on this one now. What did we just finish up? Well, Chelsea City Manager, that was a big one. Mendon, Holbrook, I'm going down the map here. We've done quite a few more department heads lately. We're doing a highway superintendent now. Honestly, we've said no to more town administrators than we've said yes to. We tried to work with Orange. That didn't... Actually, that's one of the three in my career that didn't end up with a candidate, and they went a different way, you know. So it's very hard at that town administrator level to fill. The pool is so strong, which is why I'm excited for you. The pool isn't as strong, because you're going to get those people who want to be a town manager. So I want to say, if you count in, we did the town administrative of Rainham, but that might have been 13 months ago. You know, five? We're doing about five a year, I think, you know. But quite frankly, some of them we have not put in for. And I don't want to list the names who have had, you know, three in the past few years. And, you know, we avoid catastrophe.
Of course.
And then, so to... One of my questions is to a point you just made. So if the first round, there are no candidates, do you then continue into a second round of advertising?
Absolutely. Yep.
For the same contract price that...
Yep.
So you're... Okay.
Yep, yep. And if something... And we will do... Most firms will say, if for some reason you lose somebody in one year, we would do it again.
Okay.
You know. Beyond that, not so much, because then the information isn't fresh. There's a different dynamic, that sort of thing. We have had... It's better to put it out again than to choose from a less-than, you know, pool.
I agree.
But your timing is good. So if you, you know, if you move quickly and you get a profile going, you know, you're going to catch people before their budgets or on the cusp of... You know, they're starting their budgets now. But, you know, March is not a time to be hiring somebody, you know. So now is a good time. You could get it advertised and closed. The screening committee could do the work. And even December, even early January, you'd be in good shape.
So that was... That's my final question, is what... So what do you see as the time for the search?
Well, you've got a few holidays, which is a little bit of a barrier, you know. So that's a bit of a challenge. But if we move quickly, we say three to four.
Okay.
But if it's November now, say you do that, you have the search, you do the profile, that will take 31st of December. You know, you might... We would have to look at the date and say, "Don't have the deadline be the week before the New Year. Have it be, you know, in the New Year," and then hit the ground running that way. But what we do is meet with the screening committee during that advertising period, so that they are teed up for the week that the deadline comes. And we do always say, "Open until filled," only so you don't have to go back and redo it.
Correct.
You know. But realistically, by the time you all get a profile done, that could be done. Well, Thanksgiving is early. You know, you could have a December deadline. We would just have to back into that. We're actually advertising for shorter periods of time now. People... We just advertised Mendon with a November 30th deadline.
They probably want a decision, so they can move on or not.
Exactly. Because it's not people waiting to look at the globe anymore.
Correct.
They're getting them delivered right to them, you know. So we've actually been shortening it.
So what are you doing? What... How many weeks are you doing from the time it hits, like MMA or ICMA?
November 7th to November 30th.
Okay, so...
Or three weeks.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Well, the...
A little less than a month.
At least to get an initial response.
Exactly. And we'll get a flavor. And you're right, because if... Exactly, and we'll get a flavor, and you're right, cause if we say, oh, it's not looking like we have enough to really do our due diligence, we will extend it and say, well, that's because there was Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, and, you know. So, I'd love to get it closed by Christmas and then do the interview work the first of the year. But it's too important to rush it. You know, so, um, we'll work with you on that. Okay, well, thank you. All right, take care. I wish you well, no matter what you do.
Thank you. Have a safe trip back.
I will. This is a nice, easy ride.
Yes, it is.
We thought you were gonna be on Deadliest Catcher.
I was looking forward, it started out to be a bad day.
Well, there you go, and you met me, so there you go.
How can you go wrong?
Thank you.
Okay, so, I know you missed a lot of, but you can. Alright, so, uh, I kinda left this open for the next part, because I, I wanted to throw out, um, I did reach out, I was able to connect with Community Paradigm, who is the one that do- they did the search the last time. Um, they are interested in, um, being in, you know, doing the search again. I didn't know if you would be looking, because everyone doesn't know them. Um, Phil was not on the council at that point, and Mark was not. So, excuse me. I didn't know if you wanted to schedule another night. They were not available. I, I did try to see if they could come tonight, but they had another commitment already.
Can he be here for Monday night's meeting?
Um, I did not, I did not ask that. Um, I don't know, too, if Zoom is an option, to, you know, to do a, a Zoom meeting with them. Um, I mean, I can, I can definitely, I won't be at the meeting on Monday.
Even if it's not him, a representative from the firm, maybe?
Yeah, well, I know tonight they had, there was something going on.
No, I mean, if, to math's point, if they Zoom, somebody from there could Zoom in or whatever.
That's what I'm saying. Would you guys be okay if it was a Zoom? Either Monday or another night. I mean, I don't, I didn't ask, because I, I didn't know what you guys wanted to do.
We definitely wanna keep our options open, so we definitely wanna hear.
Okay.
I just know that doing a Zoom meeting in this room is gonna be a little challenging.
Well, I did it from vacation.
Were you, were you able, I forget how.
It was a delay in the voice, though.
Cause you were watching from like, the live stream, right?
Correct.
That's why, that's why you had the delay.
Right. Yeah, because I can't, I can't hear what you guys are saying.
Oh, right, that's what it was.
So the live stream is all I could get, right.
Because really, all we want is audio more than anything.
Right, there's a delay between what I'm hearing and from what I'm saying. It's not a live Zoom.
Do you know if we have a Zoom license? We do not.
The one from COVID expired? We never renewed it? Okay, cause I know we had a government one with COVID. Cause that's how we were doing all our meetings.
Or a monthly cost.
Gotcha.
In order to get it, it was an absurd amount for X amount of licenses.
Gotcha.
And frequent times that we use it.
Makes sense.
Alright, well, we're gonna have to check into that, so, um, let me, I don't, so I don't know if it'll be Monday. I don't think we have enough time to figure out that for Monday. But let me see what the availability is. Um, is everybody around next week, towards the end of the week?
Sure.
Yep.
Alright, so.
It's not on Friday.
No, it won't be Friday. I'm thinking maybe Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday might be better.
Thursday would be better.
I think you get forty-five minutes of Zoom free.
You do, you're right.
But that's not, that's not enough if, I've been on once, that all of a sudden just kicked out.
Hold on, we'll be right back. You gotta do another one. Somebody's gonna send a link.
Okay, so, um, I guess that's, that's what we'll, we'll try to do. The other thing I wanted just to, um, discuss with you is, so we are getting resumes for the, for the interim. My, so the advertisement that Jess and I did was, they needed to, to apply by the end of this week for priority consideration, but we had already talked that we were gonna be moving quickly on this. So, once I have, once I see if I get anything else, I will email you all this weekend. I don't think the, did Jordy send out the agenda?
Yes, I saw it this morning.
I got the Monday packet already today.
Right, it came out at like, ten o'clock.
So, the, nothing was in the pack, so the agenda?
I just saw the agenda.
No, I know, yeah. So the agenda says that you're going to review the discussion, like review the resumes, discuss, and then decide who you want to, uh, interview. I realize you don't have them yet, but I would rather just send them all out at once, instead of me just keeping, you know.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, um, I, I gotta see if there's a way to do it easier, so that they all.
Is that an executive session?
I was just gonna say, that's gotta be in.
It is not executive session, because this is an interim.
Yeah.
But this is not a discussion, in my opinion, for an open meeting.
But the issue is, is that, per open meeting law, you can't have this type of discussion in executive session unless you appoint a subcommittee to review the resumes.
So, does that put any applicants in jeopardy if they're applying at other positions?
It's an interim, so I would say.
Does that expose them to?
I mean, this is, it, it's a part of open meeting law that, so, this, it's not unusual for, I would say, it, it would be unusual for a town to appoint a subcommittee to review resumes for an interim.
No, that makes sense.
Position, so I don't think anybody who may have applied for the interim position, like they won't be surprised that we're discussing this in open session.
So what I think is really important that happens, that, is that everybody over the weekend, Google the people that are applying. Like, come in prepared. Not just that you have a resume and the person looks good on paper. Actually Google people and see where they're from and, and what's going on with them, so that you all can have a discussion about that. And then, however many you all decide to interview, and then, hopefully, then at that point, just next week, like on Tuesday. Um, set up some interviews, because I won't be able to do that.
Is this, um, is this like the corporate world, like outside municipal world, where like, if you put an application in, you get, and you get an interview no matter what? Alright, no, I'm just asking. I mean, if I apply somewhere, I'm expecting to get an interview if I'm chosen.
Or at least a response.
Well, everybody will get a response.
Everyone will get a response, but every, I, I, maybe I misunderstood you. Are you saying, like, if we got ten people, do we have to interview all ten?
Yes.
We do not.
Okay.
And I think it would not be in our best interest to spend that much time.
I'm just asking, I don't know how that works, that's all.
Interns position?
Excuse me?
Do interns, or interns only do that for a job, or what if we like them, can we pick them?
So, s- uh, so some of the resumes say, I don't have any intention of applying for the permanent position. Uh, a lot of people that do the interim positions are retired.
For the money.
Right, that they can bring to the table.
So, I mean, you all will see, um, I, I didn't thoroughly look at every single one yet myself. I just know that we've gotten several. But again, I just felt like if I, every time I got one, I sent it to you, there'd be this chance of people missing them, and I, it's just easier to send them all at the same time. And then you have the complete packet of everybody who, who applied. But I, but I do think it's important on Monday.
A hundred percent, cause time is of the essence, as important as this was tonight. Appointing an interim, in my opinion, probably should have been done Monday night in an executive session. But we should have had the, it's been, next Monday, I believe, will be fourteen days since the chief gave us his.
So I've already spoken to the chief, and the chief is, the chief is fine with continuing. He realizes that we are moving quickly. I mean, we literally, we accepted Ryan's resignation on Thursday, we met on a Monday, we advertised for an interim on Tuesday. Like, we, you have to give enough time for people to.
Apply.
Apply. And so, I, I think that if we have the potent, we have the potential of, if we are able to move on a decision on, from all of you on Monday night, as to who you want to interview, if Jess can set up interviews on Tuesday. Now, whether that's next week, or the, like, Monday maybe of the following week, again, we have Thanksgiving in there, so we can't get too close to Thanksgiving, but I still feel like we're on board to have somebody hired by the end of November, which is, is really, I think, very realistic for having to advertise.
See, I disagree. I think we've, I don't know, I think we've squandered a fourteen day window. And now we're delaying an interim for thirty days, maybe with Thanksgiving getting in the way.
Well, how would we hire somebody? How would we, how would we move any faster?
Well, if we had qualified applicants the first week, we could have scheduled interviews for this week. Because until right now, I had no information at all on the interim search. None.
What do you mean?
Well, I don't know. Did we get applicants? Did we not get applicants? Is the chief on board? We still haven't discussed if the chief is gonna be compensated at what level. Because he obviously will be. It's just a matter of dollar amount. We haven't had that discussion, which in my opinion, again, should not be in an open meeting.
That would not be in an open meeting.
I'm just saying, I think we've squandered time, that's all, in my opinion.
Well, we all, when we met the last day, the last time we met, we all agreed to a ten day window to get resumes. Like, that was discussed.
Okay, and we also agreed that the chief gave us fourteen days, which is Monday.
I've already ta- I've talked to the chief, and the chief is fine.
Okay, but I feel like we're putting him in a, in a negative position.
Well, that's not the, that's not what he's communicating to me. He realizes that the, 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 the work that he is being asked to do is just to deal with any emergencies. I'm not aware of any emergency that have come up. He's had to sign, like, some abatement applications. He's had to deal with a few things, but, um, I spoke to him on, it was Wednesday, I spoke to him on Monday.
Okay, I'm just saying, the longer things delay, he may get engaged in other situations that he may not wanna be engaged in.
And I, I think he would let us know if that came up, that he had a problem with what was going on.
Well, I would encourage anyone on the council to give the chief a call. Or walk across the parking lot and have a conversation.
Well, I did speak to him on Monday.
As did I.
And I guess we must, we must be getting very different.
I don't think we are, at any rate.
Okay. We can schedule a meeting with the chief in executive session, if that's what needs to happen.
I think it's a council decision. I don't think we need to involve him.
But if we're negotiating, um, pay for him, he would have to be involved.
Not necessarily.
He has the right as an employee to be in any executive session that we have, that we're gonna discuss him.
But that would be his option.
We have to provide him notice of an executive session.
I agree with that. As far as the dollar amount on compensation, I don't believe he needs to be present. That's a council decision.
Not necessarily, but he has to have the option to be there.
Exactly, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay. Anything else on the search or the interim?
Nope.
Okay, any other business? Have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Matt, second by Carl. All in favor? Okay, good night.